Hey, Tim, can you speak? Just to make sure it's working on our side.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, awesome.
Sorry about the delay. We didn't get it anywhere. I just, we got on it, so.
Okay, awesome. We just want to make sure before we proceed that you're connected and everything's good.
That's fine. Thank you.
No, no worries. Do we have anyone signed up to speeches?
No, we don't.
Okay, I would like to. I would like to ask, I know it's not part of the agenda, but I don't think it needs to be. Mr. John Penzel passed away this past week, January 6th. And I'd like to read the proclamation before we. Ms. Paul Strini, I think the noise is coming from you. Can you mute, please? We're getting some feedback. Ah, that worked, cool. So, John Penzel, as you know, owned Penzel Motor Sales forever. His family owned it for, I think it was eighty-four years by the time he retired. I found out on January 9th that he had passed away, which consequently was his, in 2018, was his last day of ownership at the dealership. So it was a little shock because we saw him in October. I saw him in October. He did really well. I know Jay talked to him a few times even after that. And so I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas, on behalf of the Village of Hampshire, I wish to record our deep sorrow over the passing of Mr. John Penzel on January 6th, 2024. And Mr. Penzel was a beloved father, grandfather, friend, and community leader. And whereas he was born in Chicago, schooled at the Marion Military Academy and Johns Hopkins University, where he was a leader, serving as a top cadet, battalion commander at both institutions. And whereas Mr. Penzel went on to proudly serve his nation as First Lieutenant in the United States Army, where he was exemplified, or exemplified dedication and leadership. And whereas his post-military work began at Dodge as a new district sales manager and later rejoining his father's business at Penzel Motor Sales in Hampshire, Illinois, continuing what would ultimately prove to be a seventy-five-year legacy of excellence by leading the dealership to be recognized as the nation's top Chrysler Dodge and Jeep dealer in its final years. And where he will be remembered by the, for the guiding principles that he instilled in his family and friends, sharing his love for history, his country, and the Catholic Church, which spoke volumes about the man and was. And whereas John Penzel Jr. will be profoundly missed, but will be fondly remembered as his legacy endured. He was a very important part of this community. And he meant a lot to me personally. He always would take time and show. Show kind and grace and always offer words of positive encouragement. So he meant a lot to a lot of people. He was active in founding, one of the founding members of the Hampshire Historical Society, which I know many of us are a part of, and we're really going to miss him, so. I thank you for your indulgence with that. With that, the meeting minutes from December 21st, 2023 are in front of you at this time. If you'd please review them for additions, deletions, or corrections. Does anyone have any changes or additions or anything that we'd like to talk about from the meeting minutes? Bearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 21st, 2023, as presented.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Because we have a remote attendance, we're going to have to keep a roll call vote on everything this evening, so roll call vote, please.
Spoder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion cast as succeeded.
Next, we have, do you want me to just take sure? Okay, the next we have Ms. Sharon Egger. She's with us this evening. She has expressed interest in serving as a commissioner for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Her information is within the packet. We've had a good conversation about her experience, and I think she's going to be a valuable asset on our Planning and Zoning Commission. I know Chairman Marak has also had a few conversations and feels the same way, so I would present Ms. Egger for any questions at this time. If the board has any, or if the board doesn't have any, I would appreciate a motion to approve her appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I just have one. Is this filling an open position, or did somebody leave and it's filling?
So has it been?
The latter. It is the latter.
Somebody has left the.
Correct.
Chair, Commissioner Neal had tendered his resignation probably about October. He gave us a heads up that he was, that he's got a change in roles in the municipality in which he works and said that it was a two. She was trying to balance family and life and commitments and that kind of stuff, so that's why he decided to resign. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Sharon Egger to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you follow up, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
And Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
The following motions that I'll ask you for are to reappoint people that are already serving on the Business Development Commission. David Pizzolato is one of the founding members of the Business Development Commission. He expressed interest in re-serv, I guess, reserving, right? Getting reappointed to the position. He currently serves as the vice chair of the Business Development Commission. He's done a really good job for us. And I think, I think he's the last founding member.
Maybe Bill?
Uh, no, he was not. So he's the last founding member of the Business Development Commission. So I would entertain, his information is also in the packet. I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. David Pizzolato as commissioner to the Business Development Commission. Second, questions, comments, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Megan Ragel also is currently serving on our Business Development Commission. I believe that she was appointed a few years back, but she was appointed to fill a term by somebody that had resigned. So if her name looks familiar, that's why, because we just appointed her. I want to see, I want to say it was a year ago or so that we just appointed her. She's the daughter of a former trustee here in the village and has done a really good job on the Business Development Commission as well. So I would appreciate a motion to appoint Ms. Megan Ragel to the Business Development Commission. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you follow up, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Egger. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a motion, excuse me, of a motion, consideration of a resolution approving the letter of credit reduction for Thames Farm subdivision. The reduction in the amount of $4,210,097.88. That will leave the remaining letter of credit and balance of $5,819,027. You have an agenda supplement in your packet for Mr. Paulson? Do you have any questions? He's available for questions.
Good evening, Mr. Paulson.
Good evening. I'm having some technical issues with my video, but I am here.
Sorry, pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Paulson?
Just our usual standard question of all the work that's being reported as completed as EEI verified this work has been completed and satisfied to the quality at which it's been completed.
Yes, it is, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution approving the letter of credit reduction for Thames Farm subdivision. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you follow up, please?
Ms. Paul Strini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Spoder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Then we would ask your consideration of a resolution approving a professional services agreement with LAP Incorporated in the amount of, excuse me, for design, construction, management services for the new public works facility. This contract is in the amount of $92,045. Mr. Kluber is with us here tonight if you have any questions. This is a subcontract under the LAP agreement, which you have in your packet. The details of the work that will be performed is in that subcontract in your packet. As you know, the village board has made this a priority for the, for the village. However, the board has not provided a funding source to build the building. At this point, we have funds available in the budget from public use funds, which are development funds that will pay for the, for an end of this planning. This will give us an opportunity to look at some of the options that we have in the site. You recall the public works garage was not originally designed for the, for the village hall site, but we'd like to put it there now. We also have the property that the board's authorized us to rent, which is working out great, by the way, especially during the cold temperatures earlier this week. That was really helpful. We're also going to be looking at that site as a possible source, excuse me, as a possible location in case we're not able to look at everything on the village hall site. At this point, we'd be putting the, the village, new village hall, which is scheduled for about five years from now, also the police department is scheduled for five years from now when their D6 fires, as well as the, the public works garage on the same site. We do believe it's possible, but we'd like to do some master planning work with Kluber on that. We've also done a needs assessment, as it says in your packet. The needs assessment says that our garage should be thirty-three thousand per feet, and it costs about $10 million. That's pretty substantial compared to what we've been talking about previously. So we're going to be looking at possibly phasing this in as construction over time. So we'd like to look at all these things at the preliminary planning stages, and that's what we're going to be having Kluber do on the LAP contract. So, Mr. Kluber's here to speak with you if you'd like. Excuse me, Chris.
Mr. Kluber. Chris Hansen.
Yeah, Chris Hansen is here to speak with you if you have any questions about that. And Mr. Starrett would be here, but he's firing up the trucks right now. The guys are going out to sell.
Does anyone have any questions about this? This is very preliminary, as we talked about. We're just kind of figuring out what our needs are.
If I'm understanding correctly, this stage would be evaluating the, the land to see if it meets our needs with all, with those considerations?
That would be part of it as well, as well as refining the, the needs, the needs assessments, so we know exactly what we need, as well as possibly phasing in a shell or maybe a partial building that we could add on to later.
Or at least designing what that process would look like and what those phases include. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, for this design build, can you, could you walk us through what is necessarily included for the ninety, is it ninety-two thousand?
Forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars. Is it the initial scoping, what would be needed based on like what the recommended size is, as well as footprints, drawings, building design, all of that?
Not that far. Yeah, Chris, just speak to that.
Chris Hansen from Kluber. Our interview here. Welcome. Excellent question. So the way we're going to take a look at this is really in two pieces for this initial phase. The first piece is a visit to the previous documentation that you all have already prepared for your village hall, police station, and those site development diagrams. As Jay pointed out, adding the public works to a master plan site, we want to make sure that it's going to be proposed in a location that makes sense for a long-range plan. So looking at all of the parts and pieces as it relates to a site development plan or a site development master plan is included in this first step to make sure how it's going to be phased, how it's going to function, how people will access the site makes sense for the long haul. Now, the second piece to this, and more important piece, is a further refinement of what does the public works facility want to look like from a preliminary planning standpoint? We have had preliminary conversations that suggest, based on need from the user's input, that the facility is somewhere around thirty-two to thirty-three thousand square feet in size. The next step in this process is now to lay out the space, lay out all the apparatus, exact footprints for those things, and refine, really, there is no floor plan for this building whatsoever. It's just an idea that it's thirty-two thousand square feet. Our first step will be, what does that look like? Can we test fit and get the different pieces of equipment and apparatus in the building? And then ultimately, lamp incorporated is involved from the construction side is to do a full construction estimate, as well as project scheduling, to look at the phasing approach over the long haul for how all of these projects might want to be phased into the development plan. So the site diagram will show phase one development includes this amount of work for these kind of dollars in this timeline, and then phase two, phase three, phase four. If there's multiple phases, depending on how financing works, they are here to assist the design team, our team, in, in developing those costs, as well as constructibility ideas. How can we do this maybe cheaper to maximize the budget? And we've worked with them on a number of these projects in the past, so excellent team working relationships develop those to get into the most square footage for the most affordable price. So that's really what this first step is. And part of what we'll be doing is we'll be coming back to our view and, and showing you the progression of the designs and how that might lay out in terms of the schedule. We'll also need to work with Jay and his team on the finance side, just to make sure we understand what the preliminary numbers look like over a development timeline or budget timeline.
Has the growth of the village been taken into consideration for this building? So we don't have it built in five years, we outgrow it?
It will be. It has in the preliminary conversations prior to us being under contract to allow us to understand the rough order of magnitude. Does include projections plus approximately a twenty percent growth factor within the thirty-three thousand square feet that we are looking at. So that has been currently factored into the calculation, yes.
So would I be correct in saying, repeating back what you said, that function is going to lead form, which will then be limited by finance?
It may be limited by finance.
Well, finance will limit what is possible or.
Sure.
Allowed for.
Yeah, the parameters of finance, obviously, will dictate development schedule. But the other piece of this puzzle, as I had mentioned to Jay about a week and a half ago, it's nice that we're going to kind of look at the placement of all the buildings on the site as well, because I think at the end of the day, we want to try and have some harmony to the campus aesthetic, because let's, let's face it, you're, you're creating a grouping of buildings and a very connectivity to the outdoors as well, and you're adjacent to park-like space. So what do those connections look like? What do the aesthetics of some of these buildings begin to take on as a character? Is that the image you want to portray? Some of those things we'll actually be looking at in this first phase to make sure that we're on board and you're on board with those concepts as well, and what the relative costs are for those, you know, those aesthetics. So we're not just building a big precast box in the back, and you build this beautiful village hall in front, and it's the backdrop, and does it look appropriate? You know, we need to talk through some of those things in concept to have a better understanding, but. Based on the information we've had from literally two meetings, we're sitting just roughly with base conversation about thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand square feet.
In the list of items provided and not provided, whether they're by the design builder or by type of, it's under architectural and interior design. It says multiple preliminary designs, options during schematic design phase, including as part of basic services your organization, your organization would provide. And then two lines down, it says renderings, models, mockups, or other presentation material customized are not provided. Can you talk to the difference of what it is you are going to provide and what you aren't? Because when I read this, it seems like the actual rendering of the building would not be offered, and that seems pretty important for design builds, so I'm assuming I'm interpreting this wrong.
Yes, so the additional services piece identified on page thirty-one, ninety-seven through packet. The Kluber listed items are generally those items that would be included for a full project delivery. In other words, past schematic design. Some of these items like interior design does not occur during schematic design, but it occurs later, and until we understand the full scope and magnitude and budget for the facility, those types of items would be determined at that time whether or not we need to include those values of those. The actual renderings at this preliminary stage, what we normally do is a site development diagram and some basic floor plans for the building and a few elevations. We don't necessarily do full-blown renderings in schematic design. Could we do those? Yes. But at this point in time, we are not including that portion for this particular phase of project. We usually do the investment in further renderings once budget and size of building is confirmed first. Then in design development, that's when we normally would move forward to get into more of the aesthetic detailing and the renderings of the building. So those dollar, investment dollars are not being spent early on and possibly thrown away until the budget is confirmed and the development timeline.
We can't do that, though. I mean. I was just going to say, if we wanted to go further in the design, we could go further. It's been, it's a lot more, a couple hundred thousand dollars more. But at this point, all we're really trying to do is accomplish, is determine the site location, the best location. Will it fit on the village hall site, or do we need to look at another location? And if so, would it be the current facility where we're renting? Otherwise, we'd be spending more money like the village did about fifteen years ago, way too much money on a plan that never, never, never came about.
Yeah, there's a, some of you have seen it, some of you haven't, but there's a bunch of binders in the back or upstairs now with full blown down to where the outlets are placed in every office.
And took the village about five years just to pay off the design portion of that project, almost half a million dollars. And we just don't want to go down that road.
Yeah, I forget what year it was, but it was pretty close to fifteen, twenty years ago now. I don't think we need to go that far in the process. Yeah. Maybe someday. So if, if deemed not feasible to build at our selected site, are we going to have to go through this process again?
We're going to be looking at two sites. We'll be looking at our primary, the village hall site, and then the site where Trees Unlimited is.
Right.
Where we're renting right now.
Okay.
That would be an ideal location as well. It's just that we own the property we have now, and we wouldn't have to pay anything for it. We have talked to the owners of Trees Unlimited about the possibility of purchasing, and that's a possibility.
But we're confident one of these sites will work.
That's our, that's our intention. We, we believe they would both work.
Okay.
It's just a matter of which one would be best. We'll be coming back to the board for all that.
Yeah, if you, I don't know, maybe it wouldn't hurt to fit design that the, that we saw through this process where it shows the village hall on that piece of property with the park and all that other stuff, would that be possible that you could send to the board?
Sure.
So that they can get an understanding of kind of like what we're dealing with up there? I think maybe that might help. Because there's a lot of open space that was accounted for on that piece of property that would, like, there's parkland that is swamped, that does the park district no good, so we wouldn't, so, you know, we've had preliminary conversation with the, the park district about that they wouldn't, they have no interest in swampland, but at the time, the village board was going to give it to them anyway. But because of that, you know, the building was spaced out away from it so that it would be open space and that kind of stuff. Not that open space isn't important, but that might not be the best.
Suitable for building.
Correct. So like if we don't turn that into open space, we can do the building in a different area. So I think it might be helpful for them to see what kind of the village had in mind at some point and why we're going through this exercise.
The alternative is if you just wait, and we can wait for a funding source, we'll, we've already missed the deadline for meeting, meeting next winter. We would have approved this contract back in December and get started with the full, full funding authority by now in order to get in the building by next winter. So we're, we're looking at now the winter of '25. So there's not a real rush on this, but we'd really like to get started. But if the board is not comfortable with this, we can wait long until there is a funding source for the construction.
Can I ask you a question about the cost breakdown? So in the design build agreement with LAP, the design builder, it's ninety-two thousand and forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. In the letter from Kluber, it points out that total basic services are seventy-five thousand, seven seventy-five, and that there's additional services for civil engineering for schematic design basically at our thousand, two seventy-eight. If we just rough that, it's about eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And there's five thousand dollars, I believe it's an agenda supplement. Five thousand dollars is the land portion of that for managing the contract, and for some of the services that are provided during that same time. And the.
So the five thousand dollars goes to pieces on here that safe design builder responsible, which I think are three, four, four different areas under additional services? Is there additional things they're doing?
It's, I believe it's mentioned in the agenda supplement, but yes, essentially, they're managing the, the work that Kluber's going to be doing for the, for the eighty-seven thousand. They'll be managed by LAP, and that's their portion to manage that, as well as some other services that they'll be providing.
This first phase of the work for the five thousand dollars is scheduled development and cost budget, as well as design input on constructibility, ideas that the design team brings forward as it relates to cost for various ways to attack this project, design this project. So that's where that starts. This additional services fee piece that you're referring to, I believe, is for the entire project that you were to go from today all the way through the end of construction. So there are only portions of this, although they're identified as who the responsible party is, that is if this were to be a full contract approval. Tonight, a limited portion that LAP put into their agreement or their consultant is principally on Kluber to get through this schematic design, the principal planning of the, of plan itself, and then they're doing the budgeting to get us to a point. So you have an informed decision as to the size and the location and the cost of this project and an approximate development timeline.
Okay, so that, so that statement, under, back to that table, under site evaluation of design, civil engineering, Kluber, is that the eleven thousand that you're listing as?
Yes, we are hiring, we do not do civil engineering in-house. We were asked not to use the village's civil engineer EEI, so we have contracted a separate agreement that we are holding with the civil engineer to help with, help us with that preliminary site development, design, and plan. That is utility connections, stormwater management, parking lot layout, circulation. That is utility connections, stormwater management, parking lot layout, circulation and flow based on vehicle sizes. Those are the types of things that they will be assisting us with. In addition to things such as topographic surveys for the actual property in question. So we understand that the contours, the lay of the land, it's, it looks relatively flat on the site. But they will also be doing that survey work, which is going to be required for the entire parcel, let me say. So that investment, when it's done one time, will actually be information that can be used for all future phases of the development. Because they're intending to do the entire property.
Can I ask a question? This is more, I guess, for staff. The Park District proposed, ran a referendum that failed. But they wanted to build, I believe it was right across from us.
Right, to, to be on north, right.
Is this project going to take into account what might, are we going to partner with the Park District, I guess, to give a cohesive design with them instead of just their building and our building and it's totally?
The men and I have met with the Park District, both the Secretary of State and the President, that they had those conversations. And we intend to work with them.
Okay.
To the extent that they want to work with us, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I think there's a difference too. I mean, it still needs to go to a referendum.
Well, they still do. And it didn't do very well last time. And I don't foresee it coming back for a little while. But I just wanted us to keep that in mind that they.
So that we don't have different building.
Basically, you don't drive into an eyesore when you come to town.
Mr. Edges. Well, I know we don't have funding decided. If there would be funding, if we can find a way or what it would be. Is it your opinion this must take place before we can even have that discussion? Because this will define what that funding needs to be.
This will give you more options.
Okay, all right.
And I think it's, me personally, because I, I'm kind of up the thought process of like, this is in the, in the beginning. I've used this phrase and Mr. Edges is probably going to throw something at me like, is it, is it conceived that like this is putting the cart before the horse? Like we're designing a building that we don't know how we're going to pay for. But realistically, when you're going through this process, you know, if you look at how we started this, which is we need a building. And then we were going to put up a Morton building. And then we were going to try to put like bring in Phil on the additional site that we, or the original site and stuff like that. This has taken shape in so many different ways. This is going to put on paper from professionals other than this board saying, your town's growing. These are the types of things that you need. These are what other towns are doing. And if you're going to go for, and ask for money or figure out some way to pay for it, you, you need this to account for something, for what's coming. And whether or not we can execute that change and have a funding mechanism in place where it's a board that's, you know, a few years down the road or something. At least they have a roadmap and we're putting just enough into it that at least we did our due diligence, that they don't have to start all over again. So.
Yeah, I guess when I first read this packet, I, and I was going through and just preparing for a seminar meeting. I read it as we're putting the cart before the horse, because where are we going to design a building for? We don't know how we're going to pay for it. However, that's why I asked the question, I did. If, if we all remember, the original discussion was like a million dollar, two million dollar with a steel building that we were going to do. We were going to be able to pay for that for some time and that came out that that's not realistic. I don't know that we can have a realistic funding decision until we have some type of conceptual design on what that cost would be. Which this is a very different discussion. It's not we're designing the building and then we're going to try to figure out how we pay for the building, which is designed. It's more going to be, we're going to design, get offered suggestions and then say, could this even be funded? And if so, how would we?
And one of the biggest conversations that I've had with Jay in, in recent times is, you know, maybe we can't come up with a full funding mechanism for this. How do, then can we take this and then turn it into phases, you know, or, and then start, and at least start something? Is it, you know, Trusty Coates has worked hard on this over the years and he's really beat the drum for this. And he never lets us forget it, which is good. And they need it. And it's clear that they, they being the public works need it, especially after this week alone. You know, it was, you know, the temperatures were dropping and they didn't have to spray out outside, you know? It's clear, so we need to, as, as Trusty Coates says, stop kicking the can down the road and do something. And I think this is a good step. Trusty Coates, do you have anything?
Let's just build it. We're about paying for it later. Got a Visa card or? Got some free cash.
Mr. Mayor.
Lots a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not sure.
Trusty Palestrini, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just, I agree with everything that's being said here. It's a good thoughtful conversation, so learning a lot off of it. I did have just two questions. It was mentioned not to use EEI as the civil engineering. And I was just, I didn't understand why.
Just because they'll be, they'll be supervising the project and managing the project, coordinating the project from the regulation side, let's say.
Okay, so it's a conflict then, okay.
Right.
The other question is funding and because we don't have it. And it says the development-driven public use funds are available and can be used. And I'm assuming that's been budgeted and included from the existing budget that we're in right now for this?
It is not in the current budget, but the funds are available. We talked about this two or three meetings ago, I think, when Trusty Coates asked the question. This fund was originally budgeted at about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars income, I believe, for this year. Right now it's at about five-hundred thousand. And we're projecting it at almost seven-hundred thousand by the end of the year. So there's a real surplus of those funds available.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I make one more comment on this? I think it's, we've all shopped for a home before and you have to decide like what are your needs? And you have to figure out where you can afford. And you have to figure out what's going to work for you, right? We can't do that and have that budget discussion until we've set down a necessary needs, right? And what we have. And I think all of our residents can understand that when we, when we talk about it like that. I think having this study will allow us to help our residents educate themselves about what our needs are as a community. And especially after the week that we've had recently. I think we all understand just what a service our public works employees are doing in the equipment and the costs. That we are trying to be good stewards of your money, it's my tax money too. And we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for not just right now, but for futures. So how do we do that? And if we don't have this assessment, then how do we make those decisions? Responsible.
To your point you just made, one, one thing I didn't see in here and I probably missed it. It happened in every meeting. What's the delivery date?
There is no delivery date.
Well, if we're using this to do budget discussions and we don't have any time for this year's budget, then it won't be included for funding mechanisms until the next year's budget. So that's why I'm asking.
This particular phase should take us about two months timeline.
It's really consistent with the budget process.
So in two months, that puts us, if you kick off in February, March.
In the March.
So.
Or April.
We're going to be almost through the budget process by then.
What is budgeted, like ten million on the low end?
Frankly, purposes. We'll be, we'll be able to bring progress reports to all the chairs through the budget process, budget hearings, media updates. The, the good news is our team is currently designing several of these. And a lot of the data that is more current as it relates to budgets, in addition to the information that Lamb has, is pretty current to market conditions. So I think, Jay, you're right, probably a month, four to five weeks in, we'll probably have a first pass that looks pretty closely at a range of budget to have discussion for all of you. And then a refinement likely, and it's always a refinement. And then we land on a number that is set, you know, set to allow us to begin to figure out the phasing and financial. But at some point, we have to pick a number and then decide how to implement. So I would say by the end of that two and a half month period, we would have the direction for you, at least our recommendation on dollar amount and how we would construct it. And I will say the public works staff was very good when we first came in. We have a standard checklist of all the spaces that we would normally put into a public facility, public works facility that we reviewed with them. And they were very gracious to say, no, we don't need this, that's excessive. They did explain their needs for apparatus and under roof storage. That is the least expensive space to build. But probably the most important to them is their equipment under roof for a number of obvious reasons. And we did pull some aspects of the program back already to get us to thirty-two thousand, because it was more than that to start. But again, that was entirely preliminary meeting and we do need to sit with them and refine that information. I am confident, though, the garage size with twenty percent growth is accurate based on your entire equipment list that was provided to me. Based on all our other facilities designs. So to me, if that is the major goal and that's what Dave really wants is to get that, that equipment under roof. That would be an area I would say we wouldn't want to compromise if we could avoid it. And we look at the more expensive spaces that we could potentially trim back a tad. But it wasn't a whole lot in there that was excessive based on our other facility designs that we had done.
Is the cost presented in here a project cost or is it based on timing materials?
Project cost for fees for construction.
The basic services for your, in your letter, the seventy-five thousand, seven seventy-five, or the civil engineering one of eleven thousand, two seventy. Is that a straight project cost? Or is that calculated based on hourly rates for the various hourly rates that you have listed below by role?
Excellent question. We use national database of consultant fee ranges. Capital Development Board, federal government, RS Means, and there's a new website that also has published fees for professional services that is available to the public. All of our competition, we're all at the same relative price point range. So that's what we normally use is a percentage of the total project cost. And then we break that fee percentage into a lump sum. And then divide that out by each phase of the project as its percentage. In other words, schematic design of the total fee is approximately X dollars, twenty percent, let's just say, of the overall total for a project that's worth approximately nine to ten.
Okay, so that's why we don't have an hourly breakdown saying, project mechanical engineer three is going to have nine hours.
Correct.
Principle will have X number of hours. It's just this is the cost as based on all the databases that you.
Correct. And, and our team doesn't normally work on an hourly rate basis like several civil engineers do. We assume the risk to manage our hours to deliver the project scope to you. If it takes us more hours, we're not asking you for extra money. We have to absorb those costs.
The rates that are in there in case. If we were to add to the scope and the rate to be used.
Correct. Any other questions? I undertake a motion to approve resolution approving a professional services agreement with Lamb and Cooperated for design and construction management services for the new public works facility.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clerk, can you call the world, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Foder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestrini?
Aye.
Thank you very much and for coming tonight.
We look forward to working with you.
Ms. Foder?
It's under Article Five of the contract that Cluber actually contracting with. So we've done, we did honor about March twenty-first.
You guys don't need to stay the rest of the meeting if you want to split it, we won't take any events. Thank you.
Thank you. I will introduce the next two items, F and G, regarding the same property, Briar Hill Ventures, Midwest Companies. But the first one, we'd ask your consideration of an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area, SSA number thirty. You have in your, for Briar Hill Ventures, you have in your packet an agenda supplement memorandum from Mr. Schuster creating this SSA. This is a backup SSA. I think you all understand what that means. And so this is somewhat of a formality.
So anyone have any questions?
It's used in case the owner of the property of this company came there.
As required by King County ordinance.
Correct.
Anyone have any questions?
Remind me, Briar Hill Ventures is the one.
Midwest Companies. Over, yes, across from us, that's right.
Was this not required when we originally did the agreement with them? Were they adding something different where now they have to have an SSA?
No, the SSA is always required. It hasn't always come at the beginning.
Understood.
Yeah, we're still catching up on SSAs that were for projects two or three years ago.
Okay, and this is per King County, we have to have this, right?
Does anyone have any other questions? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut anybody off. I undertake a motion approving an ordinance proposing an establishment of SSA number thirty. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clerk, can you call the world, please?
Ms. Foder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Mr. Matt? Palestrini? And Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion, six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a plan of easement for stormwater management for Briar Hill Ventures, Midwest Companies. You have also in your packet the details of this easement for Mr. Paulson. Do you have any questions, he's online, to answer them?
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Paulson?
I'm out. Apologies. Just confused, there's already construction that's taking place on this property.
These are all things that happened during the process, Mr. Kelly, you're not all done upfront.
Don't we do all of this upfront when we work with like Crown or any of the other developments, like all of these?
We, we did some easement work on, on Crown just at the last meeting, I believe.
For a new section they hadn't programmed on yet.
We actually, yeah, no, in the same process, I would say.
If I could ask a quick, quick question then. On the design, the plan of easement itself, is it supposed to be on then that, that, the very bottom of the property that butts up to the Sioux Line Railroad? Is that where it's all, there where the easement is and the detention, detention area?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes, correct. That's where the detention area is that they have constructed and that covers the parcel or the area where their detention basin is.
Okay, so where that, that hash dotted line that goes across, is that where the demarcation to show where there's actually building and development? It's just north of that line, not south?
Correct. That, that line denotes, you know, the edge of the easement where the stormwater facility is.
How close is the closest building that I, you know, and I thought it was not, I mean, I, I'm trying to remember the type of building and I think it was a very basic type building, very small. So I just wanted to see how far that was from the building.
The building is, you know, I'd say, you know, looking at this parcel, it's about halfway up on the west side is where they built their building. The, the basin was the site, was sized and built for development of the entire site, potentially in the future. So if they put up additional buildings or create additional lots, the detention basin they've constructed is adequate for future development there.
Okay, thank you.
Paulson, so we're approving an easement for a stormwater basin that they've already constructed?
Yes, they have constructed it.
That's typically the case, right? We get, they, they build it, we sign off on it, then we.
The purpose for the easement is to give us access and we wouldn't need access until then.
Does anyone have any other questions? I undertake a motion approving an ordinance approving the plan of easement for stormwater management for Briar Hill Ventures.
So.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clerk, can you call the world, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Foder?
Aye. Motion, six zero.
Mr. Edges?
Yes.
I see it's for asphalt hopper. Does, does Trusty Coates want to present this?
He might, he might.
He might, he might.
No.
No.
I will tell, I will tell the board that when they go get hot asphalt from the plant, a third of it on every trip gets thrown away. It loses its temperature and at some point it no longer is feasible to use. This will save the village a ton of money, plus we'll be able to do more hottels so we don't have, have buried cars in the roads.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Robinson?
No, I don't think I have anything to add.
I entertain a motion authorizing your thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars.
So moved.
That's what, I know trustee Coe's been wanting this, but do we have a second, please? Okay, perfect. I'm sorry, I was laughing.
We got the in-looker last year, right? Roll call, please.
Oh, one of my questions.
Oh, I didn't think you were going to entertain.
Yeah, I have a question. On page sixty of your packet, it's got shipping estimate depends on rates for nineteen hundred bucks. It's in Milwaukee. Why don't we send two guys there to get it and save the nineteen hundred bucks?
We can look into that. Trustee Coe and I.
Trustee Coe, good call.
I agree.
Trustee Coe and I are going on a road trip.
I'm in.
I won't commit date to that until I know that, but if you'll approve this, we'll look into it.
Okay, so any other questions, Mr. Coe, sir?
Nope.
Roll call, please, Mr. Paulson.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion six zero.
That will see if there's as much enthusiasm for water meters. Bring us money, just for the record. So we now ask your consideration for resolution author is an expenditure of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars for the purchase of meter couplings and check valves. You have in your packet an agenda supplement, I believe Mo wrote this when Lori and I were both sick and bad. By the way, Lori's still out sick and bad, she will be back until Tuesday, Wednesday, next week. We've been actually working with very limited staff, one or two people at Village Hall here the last couple of weeks, thanks to Karen, she's the only one that hasn't been sick yet.
And you guys got it from?
Not sure where we all got it. It might have applied in a text.
Now, it was, it was more than implied. And I was trying to count back on the timeline because the last time I stepped foot into the Village Hall was the Thursday night of our last board meeting. Prior to being accused of getting everybody sick.
I think Mo and Lori and I had exactly the same bronchitis, but unfortunately Lori came up with something else too on top of that.
Sorry, people blame the mayor for a lot of things, so if I got to shoulder this one for you guys, I will.
I did use your name, I think.
Among other terms.
But what we're doing in this case is, we had a kind of a panic, Mark Montgomery did, that he called and ordered some couplings for our, for our meters. We're selling, obviously meters very fast because of all the homes that we're building, much faster than expected. And he found a source, not a regular source, but he found a source for some of these couplings and he had to grab them that day. And it was just literally, what is it, four hundred and thirteen dollars over my spending authority? So I went ahead and authorized it as an emergency purchase, but I told Lori, I promised her that I would bring it to the board for authorization, retroactive authorization. I even ran it by our attorney here to make sure they were okay. I just didn't want to lose it because we'd be out of meters and we wouldn't be able to build. So we would ask your consideration.
Anyone have any questions? Anybody want to scold the?
No, save money, we save money.
Money saves. Perfect. That's what I want to hear. All right, I'll entertain a resolution authorizing expenditure twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Perfect, I got the first thing. Perfect, thank you. Questions or comments, Mr. Coe, sir? Trustee Palestrini, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Clerk, can you call the board, please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance in many chapter six zoning regarding outdoor lighting regulations. I'm going to have Mr. Khan introduce this. Mo drafted this ordinance and worked with our planning zoning commission, Mr. Marat. So actually Josh worked with him on this, get it to this point, but Mo is bringing it to the Village Board. So Mo, will you please explain this?
So as a reminder to the board, this was on the December twenty-first agenda. The reason it was, it was tabled was because the findings of facts weren't prepared for the ordinance. As of now, the findings of facts have been prepared and attached, that's exhibit A to the approval, proven ordinance. Just a summary of the outdoor lighting regulations, we didn't have any essentially, this by doing outdoor lighting for private properties to make sure that's not adverse impact on the basic properties, especially on residential property through the planning.
And this was initiated by the planning zoning commission who thought that this was important to amend after some recent projects.
We did, there was a question that was brought up by the park district about candle lumens, candle lumens, not nade lumens, for the rec, the rec center lighting and stuff. But ultimately, there was some concern that like if we passed this, that they would have to readjust some of the lighting and that kind of stuff, and we were sure that that's not the case.
Where?
From the park district.
Well, I mean, anything that's currently existing is grandfathered pre-ordinance anyway.
And if there was a need for, and if there was a need for a ball field to go in that had better, higher lighting requirements because of different age groups or something, we'd address it at that time.
I mean, just like any business, for a varying, varying.
Correct, right.
Just can I ask, what were the projects that prompted this?
I think it was mostly the light project where there was a lot of, the light properties project. Because there's a lot of discussion about light flowing onto other property owners. So that's what Brian knew the one.
Yeah, there was also some discussion about some of the signage on State Street here. There was a little bit of lack of uniformity as to what was acceptable, what was not. Commissioner Duhae actually brought a lot to bear on this one. There was quite a, quite an extensive discussion and one of the terms, I regrettably don't actually recall and I didn't actually, I had never actually heard of it at that time. But with a lot of the other initiatives going on, this is kind of working to streamline a lot of our ordinances and bring them up to current, modern stuff, as it were. We have several commercial properties currently under construction where lights have not been installed yet. Would this then apply to those so long as the lighting has yet to be installed or is any, if somebody's currently under construction with a current plan, do they grandfather for this?
Completely, your grandfather did at this point if they have a permit.
There's no way to retro something like this, right?
No.
I just want to know.
I would like to add while you're on that, while you're thinking about this, that Mo has been working on redrafting the entire zoning ordinance, something that the zoning planning zoning commission and the Village Board has asked for a long time, something we were going to contract out for, but Mo started that on Monday, that we're considering, this coming Monday, that board will be considering the number of zoning classifications we have and the number of uses and trying to substantially reduce those. So you're going to see a lot of action, tax amendments coming from the board in the next couple of months.
And that affect, let's use for example, the light property annex. If we change zoning classifications, I don't remember what we, we zone that in.
O and M.
Will that affect anything that we, any of that work? No?
Mr. President, trustee, again, it was stated, if it was approved and there is an after, code amendment that changes the code afterwards, those rights are vested with the old approval prior to the change.
Now, when you use, it will have to be approved by this board, as you know, because of all these special uses.
And if I can add on to both Jimmy and Jay, the intent of the zoning reclassification is not to change manufacturing to residential. It's to really just pare it down so it kind of makes more sense, so we don't have, you know, three or four different manufacturing type, but rather two of them. So it's not going to be changing, you know, from manufacturing residential or commercial to residential. It'll be a more common sense approach where existing uses in existing buildings will be still allowed to a degree in the new zoning classification.
I'll give an example of some of the numbers, like the number of types of.
Yeah, so currently we have twenty-one zoning districts, which is exorbitant, in my opinion. I haven't seen that many in any, really any town. I pare that down to when we rose into the planning zoning commission to eleven. So we, and in our code, we have three zoning districts and no properties are currently zoned. So we have an access of districts that we don't regulate, but we have another zoning code. So it'll be pared down by about ten, but it'll be done more, hopefully, I'm doing a common sense approach, we'll work with the planning zoning commission to really hash that out before it brings, brings you guys for approval.
It's something that we talked about, trying to clean up the zoning, zoning book in the end. And then this, this goes a long way too, because we've got a lot of concerns with lighting and that kind of thing as well, so.
I think I'll send the board the packet for the planning zoning commission from Monday so you can see what's coming up.
Great. So anybody have any questions about the outdoor lighting regulations?
I do.
Yeah.
So in general regulations for outdoor sections C, seventy-three, points three and six, the design that reflects glare and light emitting signs, I see that there's a height restriction. I'm assuming there's also a brightness restriction that is on the prior page and/or following page.
Yeah, so it's a new illumination standard.
Okay.
Foot candles, so for example, non-residential uses, it says outdoor lighting must not exceed one foot candle at any point on the lot line for a non-residential use. And then I could see one and a half foot candle adjacent to a residential use.
Okay. So for example, one is driving north on forty-seven in a neighboring town and sees that incredibly illuminating sign operated by our neighbors to the north. With their signs that like blinds drivers, that one. So our zoning would prevent something like that from, no?
No, because we, our zoning code can't regulate other towns.
No. But that our zoning could prevent something like that from happening in our community.
Yes.
Okay, good. I wanted to make sure that that, no, I.
She did apologize.
That would do it.
You survived that one, man.
You did. So it's fine. And then design to prevent glare and it's talking specifically about nearfaring even with pedestrian traffic. So let's say we have an incredibly security conscious neighbor who decides to put floodlights that immediately illuminate, you know, to like area fifty-one standards as soon as anyone gets close to their property. Would this be something that would address that concern? Fantastic.
I want to really break Christmas light shows. You know, dress that as well?
I believe it's on the prior page, yes. October first through January thirty-first, should they go to February second?
While we're, while we're cleaning up our book, you know, we have no noise ordinance on the books.
We have one draft it.
I'm going to get my speakers ready first.
Working on that list.
I have a couple of questions. In the prohibited lighting.
What page are you in?
Sorry. Prohibited lighting is, I'm looking at page seventy-three in the packet. Point number.
What point was it? I didn't catch that.
Yes.
In the prohibited lighting, it calls out festoon lighting as being prohibited. Yes, point two, prohibited lighting, any outdoor lighting that may be confused with the traffic control device is prohibited except if it's authorized by federal, state, county, or local government. Flashing lights, strobe lights, laser lights, and festoon lighting are prohibited. Now, a festoon light is the same as the lights that people have in their backyards that go on strings from pole to pole. That is technically a festoon light? Are we saying those are prohibited in residential backyards?
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Because I can think of.
I'm not yet.
Probably thirty houses immediately that aren't, not going to like that.
It's in the old.
It's point number two between page seventy-two and page seventy-three prohibited lighting.
That, yeah. Mr. Mayor, by my. Yeah. So if we look at the actual code provisions, and we talk about prohibited lighting on page seventy-nine of ninety-seven, which is the actual ordained provisions. Do not, festoon lighting is not included in that for the, for that save, that very reason.
Does it say it on there, counselor?
Yeah, there's no festoon. Festoon lighting is not specifically prohibited pursuant to page, the language that's on page seventy-nine of ninety-seven.
Yeah, which.
Under prohibited lighting.
Which one? There's a whole page.
Number two, it says prohibited lighting.
Okay.
Any outdoor lighting that may be confused with a traffic control device is prohibited except if it is authorized by federal, state, county, or local government. Flashing lights, strobe lights, and laser lights are prohibited.
So are there, are there any other differences between what's presented on page seventy-two and seventy-three as add the following as a new section of general regulation six dash three that would be different than what's actually.
We have things to check out. We talked about festoons, we talked about festoon lighting when the presentation came in, and that was discussed, and that's why that language was prohibited.
That wasn't my second question, that was the following.
Correct.
So according to that document, festoon lighting, what people do often in their backyards now is allowed.
Correct.
Okay. The, the second question I had was regard to residential use, it says outdoor lighting must not exceed one half foot candle at any point on a lot line for a contained, a lot line containing a residential use. Can, is there a way to put that into layman's terms of how bright? I know that one half foot candle is the power it takes to light up one half of a square foot of light. If I can see somebody's backyard light from their back, because they have a back porch light, let's say, how do we as residents know that we're not violating this because our porch light's not too bright? Like, how do we make sure that somebody, how do I as a resident within this community make sure I'm within compliance of this?
See, it's really hard unless you have a light meter. But lumens is the other, you can convert foot candles to lumens, and that's a measurement of brightness and a lot of times the bulb will tell you how many lumens it has. So that's an option, converting foot candles to lumens.
Yeah, and some of the stuff I was looking up, it was, there were some formulas and calculations, and some people are saying like a foot candle's about ten lumens, a sixty-watt bulb is eight hundred lumens. I'm now, what is that, eighty times over?
Not necessarily, because that's.
So that's where I'm trying to figure this out, because if I'm, to trustee Fodor's earlier question of the floodlight, if somebody walks in, how do we truly know that whether or not, when I'm purchasing said floodlight and trying to angle it correctly, that I'm staying within the ordinance?
You have to have a light meter to measure that, that'd be the best way.
And that would also be that the person regulating you would have to have a light meter and be able to go out there and determine if it's too bright.
You want to put a thousand watt light bulb in your front, light in front door, go for it.
Clear your neighbors complain and then we'll get the meter out.
I can't see it, Dan.
I'm trying to understand how bright is too bright? Like, does a half a foot candle mean that a sixty-watt bulb is too bright and somebody's back out here?
But it also depends on how far away that sixty, that sixty-watt light bulb is away from their back door.
I'm so glad you brought that up, because in a new subdivision, we approved forty-something foot lot lines. And so it's not very far in some.
I think we should buy sunglasses for everybody.
So I'm, I'm honestly trying to, and we're talking about updating and changing our ordinances so that they make sense. Trying to understand what this means so that I know whether or not to me this makes sense. I'm not trying to ask arbitrary questions.
I think it's, so I guess, can I, can I turn this up?
I think Mo should answer.
How would we, how would we enforce it? That's the question. What's our plan for enforcement? So when there is a question like this, how do we, how are we able to tell them, yes, you're an ordinance, no, you're not?
It'd be getting a light meter and going to the property and measuring.
I think though.
Which would be done by state bill.
I think trustee Kelly's question though is, he doesn't want to get to the point of code enforcement. He wants to go to Bernard and buy the correct bulb so he's not. So he's in compliance with the ordinance. He wants to know.
Or just for residents to be able to look at and say, this is what I can.
Right. Can I buy a hundred watt bulb? Can I buy a floodlight that's going to light up the whole street? What can I buy so I'm not getting to the point of code enforcement?
I mean, I get this in the case of commercial bleeding over into residential, because commercial developers, recreational developers. Will pay as part of their development for light studies and light pollution studies. I remember that very vividly from our light discussions, my property discussions. That is part of that. Somebody who bought a house and is putting in a, replacing a bulb in the backyard, putting in a floodlight in the backyard is not going to pay for mine's studies.
Yeah, but at the same time, you don't want to now include residential at some point, right? Because then if there is an issue, we have no mechanism to enforce it.
I think what you're asking us to do is give you a conversion from a half a foot candle to a, to lots.
Or just, yeah, some type of common term that residents.
So I know when I go and buy the lights, I'm buying an appropriate light and something that's not going to make my neighbors mad. And then the cops are at my house, and I'm going to buy a new light because about the wrong light.
And we do occasionally add those kinds of complaints.
Is there an answer? Yeah, I don't want to get.
We will, we will find a.
I'm not trying to get.
We'll find a layman's, layman's terms that we can explain this and we'll provide that.
Are you, with that being said, with that being said, are you, is the board comfortable moving forward with this without that explanation? Because I, I think that, I think that we just need some clarity. I don't necessarily know that that's, would stop anybody from passing the restrictions.
No, I'm fine moving forward. I think clarity would be, there are a lot of people that just want to be in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just want to buy a light bulb.
Exactly.
No, I get it. Right, I get it.
And I don't want the cops at my house the night I install my light bulb.
You would have seventy-five water on you, you're going to jail.
You won't have, your neighbor won't call the police on you.
I've heard about you.
My name.
Your neighbor will shoot your light.
So I mean, this is, it'd be a staff.
I, I think it's, we went the direction of educating residents again, and I realize I'm a teacher and that's all about educating people. But I don't think people are malicious intentionally as often as others may think they are. They just are doing it out of ignorance, or, you know, it's not malfeasance, it's just hoops. So we could tell people, if you put this in your, you know, at your back porch, and you have this many feet to your lot line, this is what that's going to look like. They don't need to order the twenty-nine ninety-nine on Amazon, patient need one, that's probably be the best one. Don't go for the government special of a hundred and forty.
I suspect that Mr. Stu High would be the expert. We need to consult on that, so we'll do that. We'll get a good explanation from her. She's the one that came up with these suggestions.
Thank you.
Can I ask a, oh, go ahead.
No.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Morocco about the findings of fact? There was a, a nay vote in all of this. Is there any explanation why there was a nay vote, or what was the issue that caused that? I mean, it's passed not unanimously, so do you recall or?
That particular vote, that particular commissioner, not too fond of government telling people what they can and can't do. So occasionally he will take that stance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any issue that we overlooked in the ordinance. Thank you, sir.
We talked about earlier, existing construction projects, buildings being grandfathered before this. Is that accurate?
It's permitted.
So a residential home that's already built, is that grandfathered before this?
It was grandfathered before.
Unless they take out a permit to have a new light up still.
If they add lights, like lighting in their backyard.
Right.
Yes, then that would be under, under these regulations.
You raised an excellent point earlier, for the new properties where they come out with permits, they will have to hear this. So you're.
If they've already gotten the permit.
But you don't need a permit to little voltage lighting in your backyard.
They're going to need a building permit for the overall.
Correct. No, I think, I think as it, as it pertains to residential, how do we enforce this? Or this isn't retro to residential.
No, it's not. I, it's not retro to residential. If we're asking the practical question of how it gets enforced, realistically, how it gets enforced is someone calls the village hall and says, my neighbors' lights are too bright, my kids can't sleep. That's realistically.
Right, right.
And then a what? I want to say it's a spectrum, but I don't think it's.
But how do we enforce it if they're already here and they're grandfathered in?
Well, then you would, they. Right, I mean, they would not fall under the jurisdiction of this.
We would just say, sorry, this.
Correct. But I don't know, but when we talk about enforcement, there's also code permitting. I don't know how this interplays with building code permitting with regards to life, zoning, or different bodies of law and my government. See, what you, what you're saying here is, you would be citing that for a violation of the zoning code, right? And because this isn't there, there's also building code permitting, and they may not align. And I don't know what, I don't know what the building code, I don't know, Bo knows, I don't know Jay knows, but there's two separate bodies here.
Well, so like, as an example, with the noise ordinance, right? We're talking about the noise ordinance. That's an annoyance type thing, right? So we're going to, theoretically, we pass the noise ordinance, and then it applies to everybody in the village. This is the ordinance. How do we do something like that that applies to the lights? I think that, I think that is the concern.
I guess the question is, can we make, make people take a bulb out and put a little light bulb in? Or if they, if the bulb burns out, do they have to put a little bulb in?
I don't know that residential was really discussed that much, was it, Brian?
Then it shouldn't be, because the socket can only handle so many watts. So if you have an existing light and you try to put a thousand watt bulb in it, it's only going to last for a short period, and then the socket is going to cook itself.
It burns out.
It burns out.
You can't put the sun in there and like.
Right.
Exactly.
But your questions are about residential, and I'm not sure.
No, sorry, Mike, I think we kind of went down a rabbit hole. My original question was about being grandfathered before this if the building already exists, or if the construction has already started or not. It was irregardless of residential or commercial. In my mind, the question was based on Route twenty, major commercial construction that's currently going on. But because we also have residential listed, we also have Crown Developments happening, you know, a couple thousand homes and a couple of developments that are still going up. Are those that have yet to be built, even though the plans have all been approved by the board? Are they grandfathered into this before this? So like that commercial construction on twenty, is that grandfathered into this before this because they've already broke ground, they're already building, like building stuff? Or do they have to follow this?
They have not been permitted, correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
No, the homes that, no, the homes that have been. No, the plan, you, the board had approved the, essentially the master plan.
Okay, so anything that's been permitted before tonight, grandfathered.
Yes.
Anything permitted after tonight?
Subject to this.
Well, subject to this. So on Kaiz Avenue, they're all pre-built, they're there, grandfathered.
Correct.
Homes, people are living in, grandfathered. Permitted tonight beyond follows this rule.
Correct.
That was my.
Sorry, yeah. It, yeah, you understand the reasoning why it's.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yeah.
So even if that neighbor has that floodlight that shines right into your backyard, they are grandfathered.
And that, that, that was the question behind this. How do we enforce this like a noise ordinance?
It's two separate bodies of law. One is how we zone something. What are those restrictions on the land use? And noise is, when does, essentially thinking of like a nuisance, when does this element, be it noise or brightness, come to bother my neighboring people? And then you cite them for a violation of building code or what we're drafting on a noise ordinance, which like a light ordinance, you need an audio measure to really enforce it.
So, so.
These are not easy to report.
So what I'm hearing, just, and I'm sorry, but what I'm hearing is, is if we need to, if we wanted to enforce a light ordinance for a neighbor that's shining a floodlight into your. We'd have to design a light ordinance, pass it for the entire village, you know, for, for that, like a nuisance type ordinance, and then have the material, the equipment to monitor.
Yeah, yes, you would, you'd probably, I mean, right now, if somebody did that, and I don't know what our, I really like working here, I don't have the code book memorized. But I don't know if there is something that was, that would be a, that would qualify as a nuisance in my mind. That if you take a spotlight and shine it in your neighbors every night as I try to go to bed, someone's going to charge you with a nuisance or disorderly conduct or something like that. Normally, there's not like an ordinance of violation of shining a bright too much, a light too much in your neighbor's house.
Hey, trustee Robinson.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to see if your neighbor gets mad if you do that.
I'm going to test out the brightness on my neighbor's sun.
See, we'll get, get bulbs that are baby and pellet resistant. Does anybody have any questions, or did we beat this thing successfully in there?
We sure did.
All right. I will introduce an ordinance amending chapter six zoning regulations regarding outdoor light regulations.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I can't wait for those ordinances.
What?
Ms. Clark, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Paul Strini?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt? Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize staff to bind coverage for cyber security insurance with Lloyds of London. You'll recall at the last meeting, Ms. Lyons indicated that she was having trouble getting quotes, that the insurance company that quote was reducing our coverage from a million dollars coverage to fifty thousand dollars. That was not acceptable to staff or to the board, so she has now found coverage for a million dollars from Lloyds of London. And they set up a premium that's only five percent increase. I think this is a very good, very good arrangement that she's accomplished. That's your consideration.
Anyone have any questions? I think she explained it pretty well the last time as to why we, we waited, so. There are no questions. I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to bind coverage for cyber inter, cyber security insurance. Questions, comments?
Just standing ovation to Ms. Lyons for, for the work she put into this. Outstanding. Thank you.
We will pass that along. We'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Rob?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Motion passes.
If we'll go to reports, Mr. Mayor, I just want to apologize that Dave was not able to get a streets reporter here today. I'll just say that they've been working basically seventeen, eighteen hour days, and that they're out there right now again.
Tell them not to let them have it again. They've been working their tails.
I do want to say that it's getting to a point now where they're really getting exhausted, and Dave, Dave sent me an email this afternoon that I might not, might sure might not, it's a little too personal, but. Just that they're very tired, and he's, he's going to put him out tonight, break at ten and come back in the morning, because he doesn't want anybody getting tired away. He did have one request for a day off on Friday tomorrow that he had to deny. It was okay, it was understood. But the guys are getting pretty tired right now. We've got a couple more days to go.
I've been very clear in a lot of the, and I don't want to say complaints, but when a concern is raised about, you know, overnights or, 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 you know. On the driveway and that kind of stuff, they are doing the best that they can do. This is January in the Midwest. They do, they take a lot of pride in their work, and if anybody paid attention to how the snow fell, it was very, very difficult. And, you know, it, it, it goes, they, they all do a great job. And if anybody has any complaints that they feel that the village can do a better job, we do have a snowplow ride along program that they're welcome to participate in. So if anybody has some concerns or wants to know how the job is done, or my cell phone number is listed on the website. Leave the staff alone, let them plow the roads, let them do what they need to do, and complain to me directly.
And I'd like to add, if you check this, if you check the app, pantry app, we had two new things to do app today. One is a snow blockage, and it tells them right on there, don't call Public Works, this is a problem. We do give them some references on where they can call. But we also put on the app, replacing your mailbox, which I believe, uh, Christine Erickson had, Robinson, we'll have that. So, so those two things are in the app as of today.
We encourage, we've encouraged the staff to direct community members to use the app. It's the most effective way. You can't answer the phone to the Public Works Department if you're up in trouble. So I, I've asked Jade to tell the Public Works guys to change the voicemail to say, if you have a complaint or a concern about the snow, download the app, available in the App Store, and report it. If at all possible, and you'll get a faster response. I mean, it's a team effort, and they're doing a great job. And I just, I've been all over the area in a lot of different towns, and a lot of roads were snow covered when it got cold. A lot of roads, a lot of curb lines were covered in snow because we got a lot of it. A lot of driveways had a lot of snow on it. Not the only town facing this, and I will defend these guys just like I know all of you will to the end of the earth. And we just, people just need to be kind to each other and be patient and realize that we are in the Midwest in January.
And we have, we have had a couple of calls from senior citizens who have had struggles, so Karen's been really good by handling them, and we try, try to help them out as we can. But we also had a request from business that asked us to open up their driveway, but I had to tell them no, because if, you know, we start doing that for them, and residents can ask the same thing. So we're going to have to stick to our guns on this. It's also a problem with blocking mailboxes, and we'd love to help that, but we, we really just can't.
And keep in mind that we don't normally have these problems. The typical snowplow that we get, if it's under six or seven inches or so, it's typically not a problem. But when you get four inches, and then wait, and then you get fourteen inches, and then you get ice cold where the salt doesn't work, and you. You could, you can only fight nature so much. She wins them.
But when you, when you buy a home, that's the responsibility you take on. You have to keep your mailbox clear. You have to shovel out and drag one if you want to.
It doesn't make us any less empathetic to your cause, but at the back, at the end of the day.
That's your responsibility.
If you can't do it, you got to find somebody that can. So we, we've worked, just so that everybody knows, we, we started working with the township through this whole process. And we found, we've started compiling a list of people that have volunteered or are, or hire. We looked at surrounding towns. There's one in Arlington Heights that has a program for seniors where the city of Arlington Heights actually like quote unquote registers kids or whoever. That's able to go out and shovel, and then senior citizens call for, of the city. In these types of situations, they can send them a list, so we're trying, we're looking to partner with the township on stuff like this and try to get a list together, because. You know, as you look on social media, there's a bunch of kids, hey, my kids are out shoveling this, that, and the other thing is great, except for people that need the most help, but aren't exactly on, on social media. So, you know, it's just, we're not, don't take this as us not being empathetic, but we can't do it for everybody. Just, just.
On that note, is it absolutely necessary that the guys are out there salting tonight?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Well, I know.
Because the pavement, the pavement warmed today, and it's going to freeze, and that's going to ice over.
I know that we're supposed to get, we can get them a night off.
Well, his banking is if we only get one inch, you won't have to call them out, because the ice, the seltic put down tonight will melt what's going to come.
Right. It's going to be a very light fluffy snow.
Okay. Just because then it's important to know, like, we don't plow overnight. We don't. Not unless it's a hundred and ten percent absolutely necessary. We don't plow overnight, because these are people too, and they need their rest, right? So they, they, they break overnight and they come in early. Now, that being said, the police department are out all night. They're, they're, they're supposed to be on shift, right? So if there is something where there is an intersection or an emergency or something, they're. They're, they're one phone call away. There are no plows on the squad yet, but that's coming.
I'm sure that's in the contract, and we can work on that.
Yeah, so, but, but that, just because we tell people we don't plow overnight, if there's an emergency or something like that, we can have a guy out in fifteen minutes. That's just the way it goes. There are people too, and I'll fight anybody that says that they need to be out all night. It's not happening.
You know, it may be interesting to consider when you're working with Cluber, because of how every winter we're going to have situations like this. If in that new building, we look for a space that could be like a rest and recovery space, especially for those that may have to travel and.
It's, it's in the plan.
Do you know what they have now? The guys actually take, bring their own cots. That's what they do right now. Right now, they bring their own cots. Been doing it for a long time.
Anyway, I know we are talking about the report, so if we can get this back on target for a moment. The building report is in front, in front of us. Mr. Khan is here. Talk us through that, or we can just move on to the next thing, which would be accounts payable. I don't believe we, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Khan? Okay, we'll move on to accounts payable. I don't see one for personnel at all. So I will entertain a motion to table the accounts payable to personnel indefinitely for this January twenty, or January eighteenth meeting. Questions or comments? Ms. Clark, can you call the roll?
Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
What are we doing? Tabling the accounts payable to personnel?
Hi.
Mr. Pat?
Uh.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
All right, before you, you have the regular accounts payable, the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents. Please review that.
Page six. Eight, six. Third one down. Who's Tom Herring?
Toe hearing.
Toe hearing, oh, for towing a vehicle. Toe hearing. Oh, for towing a vehicle?
Tom's.
Towing Tom's?
That's the hearing officer for, for a toe hearing.
You know what it is, since you took this good advice. He was nice enough, he, he was a nice enough guy, gave you his good advice.
He, he was.
Any other questions about Tom?
Pretty much all I had.
Um, I, I, oh, go ahead.
Page eleven. Uh, which project is LG Brothers for facade reimbursement?
LG Brothers.
For twenty-two thousand, four seventy-five, so I do have a pretty decent.
Mallies, Mallies, I thought it was.
A game cancel.
Valley?
Mallies.
Oh, Mallies.
Yeah, Mallies is much.
Okay. Close of the last meeting, I know it's been a long, we sign off on the project being done.
Yeah. Can I go back to page six? Um, under the EEI, it has style of park. I know it's a minimal thousand dollar charge, but why are we, and, why are we paying something for the park district?
Oh, page here?
I'm on page six.
Didn't we, wasn't that for the parking lot? I thought that was for the parking lot that, that, um, they wanted to redo, it was really on our, our property, right? I thought that that was.
Remember, wow, that one, that is, um, we're not gonna get a parking lot repaged for a thousand.
No, 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 I don't think it was us. I think, honestly, so I think that there was an issue. I remember.
Tony was behind you, I think, I don't.
I remember.
And I know they're redoing the park.
No, I know, I know, I think, I think.
The parking lot on Grove, uh, Incorporated, it, it's on a city street. And they're gonna extend it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They're gonna extend it, so they probably had to have work done by EEI to extend the lot, because it's gonna, even though the, the parking spaces are on Park District, you have to drive down the street, pull into the spaces on City Street.
Is it? Mr. Paulson, do you know what this is for?
Yeah, sorry, I got kicked out when I tried to turn my mic on, but I'm back. Um, yeah, so the Park District has submitted a plan to, uh, redo, uh, the, their parking lot on the west side of the park, and we reviewed the plan. That's what the charge is for, for plan review.
And that will be billed back to Park District.
Which will be the Slid Hill Parking Lot, coming off the alley.
Yeah, that's down below, they have a base to, or the.
Off the Jagger, right?
Right.
So why are we paying for that? Is that gonna be billed back to the Park District? Oh, Jay, I'm sorry, I missed that. My bad. Okay, they do, no, no, these ordinance is the next time.
Light.
Page eighteen, under Han, Hampshire Township, totally understand dispersment of transition fees. What is November twenty-two through September twenty-three? Is that backdated transition fees, or?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay. We can come back.
I don't know, it's not invoice, it wouldn't be a box, right?
I don't know. It says invoice total, four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Township, we're the Hampshire Township, I don't know, we, we would have generated an invoice.
Are we guessing that's November of twenty-twenty-two to September?
That's what I'm guessing, but I'm, I'm saying, is that back transition fees, or? Right, that's what.
We're gonna pay five thousand per calendar. Outside of.
That's pretty grand.
I mean, it's a small portion of.
I'm sure, I'm sure that you're.
I can pull it out, or I can get back to you later on, just some.
I'm sure that you're, here, Hampshire Township, dispersion of transition fees, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And then it looks like pay suburban bus for forty-two.
There you go.
Yes, the bus we pay.
Yeah, so it's just coded wrong. It's for the bus.
Oh, okay. Our, our share of that.
Yeah, so our, it's, uh, uh, four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. And it's our share from the shows. January, yeah, yeah. Let's just, our dispersment of the bus, it's just coded wrong on the invoice sheet.
Question.
Yes.
Page thirteen, top line.
Page thirteen.
CG pre-employment investigation.
Um, we are looking to bring on a new police officer, and as part of that, we do a background check and all kinds of stuff before we hire a police officer. So he passed everything, right? He should be at the next board meeting for.
I have his warrant in, in two weeks.
Any other questions about the accounts payable? I'll entertain a motion to pay the accounts payable in about five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kerr, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coth?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Powell, three?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
Hey, Business Development Commission report.
Uh, Business Development did not meet this month and will be meeting next month. There was not a in-person quorum. What I will report on is it did highlight that there is a need for the Business Development Commission to have a remote policy. Uh, and so I think that will be one of the topics in the next meeting, so that should this type of situation, as you can imagine, most people on the Business Development Commission are business people that may be traveling for work, and so having a remote policy, so that should they be out of town, they can attend, or we can still have a quorum, will be a good thing for the Business Development. Um, I'll report more at the next meeting. Or, I'm sorry, after that, so the next meeting will be the second Wednesday of February.
We need to pass that, right? The board would have to pass that.
I think it's the BDC that does it.
We don't have to approve it?
I don't think so, but we'll look into that.
Because if they're having trouble meeting, can we just approve it for them?
Uh, you couldn't do it tonight, that's about on your.
No, no, so they can probably do it before you can. Yeah, okay, I think we'll be all right.
February fifteenth, is that correct?
Is that the second Wednesday?
I believe so.
Yes.
No, we meet on.
The thirteenth of Tuesday. Fourteenth is the Wednesday.
We can do.
I'm just suggesting.
Oh, you're meeting on Wednesday, or on Tuesday?
We meet on the second Wednesday of February.
Wednesday, I, I apologize. Okay.
Next meeting will be on February first, if you want.
Yeah.
Staff, I have a.
Okay.
I got to look. Uh, Public Works.
I have none, no, three firm, Mr. Hedges.
But we've covered everything tonight.
Are you sure?
Budget?
Um, Ms. Lyons, as you heard, is, um, hopefully recovering soon, uh, from being down. The next step, uh, is for us to present the schedule of meetings. Uh, just a couple of things that, uh, have been proposed in changes versus what happened last year. The big one that I'll share with the board is that, um, I had to ask Mr. Hedges and Ms. Lyons to consider the two meetings, uh, to be, as you remember, last year, we had two meetings of the whole, uh, where the entire board is, is invited to participate, so that everybody is aware of the budget process, and it's not done in a silo. That will continue. The first meeting of the whole will be to address any questions that there may be in the proposed budget, that everybody would have a copy of the budget before moving into that meeting, right?
No, we agree that we, we get the budget two weeks before that.
Two weeks before to review, and either present questions early to help staff find the answers, or at that meeting. That it would not be a line-by-line, let's go through the entire budget meeting. But there, there would be two weeks for the board to be able to review this. That way, in the second meeting, based on the questions of the board, suggestions, and what that final budget may look like, can be dedicated to, um, lively discussion on funding mechanisms for some of the major projects that need to happen, because that will need to have some time dedicated to it, because there are some projects that have been discussed here, a building, uh, for Public Works, uh, major infrastructure work for the water and wastewater, um, systems within town, that are gonna require that the village board have some really thoughtful discussions on how do we approach funding those type of projects. And so it's felt we should have one of those two meetings dedicated. Am I?
That's correct.
Summarizing. Um, so you will see that as a difference, but the idea is, and the ask of the village board is, when that budget does come out, please make sure to read it, because we will not be reviewing it line by line in that first meeting. It will be dedicated to everyone's questions, and ensuring everyone has clarity. Anything else you'd like to add?
Thanks, that's it. We are running by schedules, so we're gonna catch up.
Any questions for me on that? Okay, I'll make sure everybody has it, and then for the, um, the budget committee, I'm gonna work with all of you to ensure we get dates that work for everybody for meetings.
Uh, new business, other announcements?
We're planning a, uh, open house for the, for you all, for, um, for our Vertra simulator, if you'd like to come see it. Uh, right now, they, they were looking at planning next Wednesday at six PM. I know it's short notice, but I wanted to see if that would be something that would work. For you?
Trying to work it into the officer's schedules and do the training. I mean, it's, it's just an open house, stop in, maybe go through a semi, you know, go through a scenario or two, and you'd be on your way.
Is there a time that would work for all of you, a better time than an evening?
Yeah.
I'll do that.
I'll send an invitation.
Did you say in anything or than anything?
Sorry?
You said, would there be a better time?
For any of you.
And then there was a short word that I didn't hear.
How better than a six PM in the evening, maybe? A different time of day.
Other than six PM. Like two thirty in the afternoon.
I mean, if you want to leave the kids. I'm not.
Just wanna make sure we're accommodating, yeah?
So, no, um, I believe trustee Fodor asked the last time about if there would be staff at the open house. You did, when we talked about it the first time. I'll go back and refer to the tape.
Hope you get some say.
I'm bringing up the chair.
All right, fair enough. All right, well, I just want to thank everyone again. Thank you to the village staff for enduring. I know everybody's been thinking of the weather and that kind of thing. I, I do, okay, I do also, I did not thank, uh, Phil Swalwell, he crafted this, uh, proclamation for Mr. Bentall, and I didn't say that at the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize, but I do want to give credit where credit is due. Uh, trustee.
I just have one thing under new business, uh, side of it, and it's just an ask to Mr. Hedges and Mr. Khan. Uh, not an urgent thing, but it would probably be good just to get their opinion. Would, if possible, um, could we get an opinion from our residential developers in town? Uh, specifically Crown, I think. There are two pieces of legislation, one in Congress, one in the Senate, specifically deal with corporations owning residential rental properties, um, and either limiting or not allowing that. In the Crown development, there was specific areas of homes and townhomes that were set up as being owned by a single entity and being built to rent rental properties. It would be good for us, I think, to have their opinion on, should either of these pieces of legislation pass, what would the potential effect on their development plan be, or would that change some of the?
Would you share those goals with me?
Yeah, so it's the American Neighborhoods Protection Act, that's the one in the House, and it's the End Hedge Fund Control of American Homes Act of twenty twenty-three in the Senate. So it's not that they've been voted on, and they've been passed in their law, it's that they've been proposed in both houses, but they have similar themes of ending major corporations buying lots of homes and making them into rentals, and this is building for rentals for a major company to own, so I'm just curious if they have a point of view of should these pass, how would that affect the development happening?
We were, we were gonna go into executive, but, um, we're gonna push it to the next meeting. We're gonna go into executive. Hopefully, we'll all be in person, and we can have a discussion, and we will from there. So, first, just planned for the first meeting, I mean, February eighth, we'll go into executive.
Did you ask the board if they wanted to executive, or is, uh, your call decision, or what?
Well, um, I guess I can ask you guys, if you guys want to go into executive, we can do it. I thought that we could just do it the next time when we were all in person. Um, how hard would it be to set up a remote link so she could get into executive?
I'll have to look.
Because otherwise, we have to do it over a cell phone, which we can do, but I don't know how productive that's gonna be. It's up to you guys. What do you want to do?
I was prepared for saying.
Okay.
But. We have to push it.
We can do it.
We have to.
I believe we can, uh, I believe you can just call Laura directly.
You know what? I mean, honestly, I, you know, I just don't want to be sitting next to people just because I had been, um, exposed to the virus, but I'm good. So, I mean, if I can, I can drive over in a matter of three, four minutes, I just wouldn't sit at the desk.
Now, we'll figure out a way for you to, to stay where you are, one way or another. Let us, let us figure out, either call you by teams or do it over cell phone.
Okay, because it's only, I mean, it's a two, three minute drive, and I, I'm fine feeling wise. I just didn't want to be sitting, you know, right next to, to Lionel and, and to Aaron.
Respectfully, there's been enough thickness around here.
I didn't know that.
Let's, uh, let's err on the side of caution here. So let's take a five-minute break and go into executive.
Laura, just keep your cell phone handy, okay?
Do I need a motion to recess? Motion going on. Also, we go into executive session.
We're, we're taking a five-minute recess.
I need a motion.
Correct. Right, I hear you're gonna come, okay, okay.
Then we can come back.
Yeah, you're not gonna, okay. Five-minute recess. Hey, comment, five-minute recess.
Oh, actually, you will be. You'll be receiving a phone bill.
Drive safely.
But I'll talk to you about getting you set up with a, with a tricky mode on that all. Yeah, now they're gonna fish what it is. That means, that means, please.
Now you can make a motion.
Okay. We're good now?
Yes.
All right, I'll make, can I have a motion to, to go into executive session under, uh, for personnel ordinance? Sorry. Questions, comments, concerns? All, all favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, Laura, are you with us?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, roll call vote for all ayes. I'm sorry, that's a, 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 now at least it's recorded a thousand. Five minutes.
Okay.
Until they figure out. Can we make sure that we don't have anybody else on? Is there anything to do?
Yeah, I said, I will.
See, black it out.
Yeah, and this meeting. We'll be able to.